We're going to go, yeah. I'd like to bring the meeting to order, please. Welcome. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We're going to start with public comment, as we always do. If you'd like to address the Select Board, just raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You've come to the podium. State your name, your address, and you have three minutes to state your case. So, if we have anybody that has a comment, please, raise your hand. Rolling right along.
Easy crowd tonight.
Rolling right along. We will go into the public hearing phase. I'm going to turn it over to the Town Administrator to go through the budget and the warrant. And we will accept questions after the presentation. Thank you. Julie?
Thank you. As you can see, the changes that were made or proposed at the last public hearing a couple of weeks ago are shown in red in the far-right-hand column. We are now standing to, I think it's at a 1.95 percent proposed increase, whereas I think we started out at minus 9 percent. So, some serious cuts were made. So, why don't we just quickly move through each department, each division, and if the Board has any further comments, but, or if you would like to put money back. I think that some department heads and myself are going to make a request that funds be So, any comments on the Selectments budget?
No.
Town clerk tax collector, the suggestion of Mr. Bugby, I went back and looked at a couple of postage lines, so that postage budget has been increased slightly.
Is that a percentage, or just a...
Yes, it is a percentage. The postage increase was 6.3 percent. Financial Administration.
Oh, do you want to speak to all the supplies in the TC? You did that.
That wasn't my fault.
It's a late week.
I know, but that's one of the ones that was discussed at the prior...
So, are we okay with leaving it at 20 cents?
Okay.
I mean, I'd be concerned because fiscal '18 actual went over.
Yeah, did come over.
I didn't hear any comments back from the Town Clerk Tax Collector.
Okay. Give us a hand, please. You okay?
Mr. Sotell has his hand raised.
Can I just ask that, because these aren't in color, if you could just highlight the areas that have changed since the last session?
So, in a...
Are they, well, are they different in italic size, or are they just less numbers, or bold numbers, or...
No, they're covered in white. To copy these things, you have to...
Just for you, Eric. Use the color for...
Thank you.
So, are we ready to move to the Financial Administration?
Yes.
Okay. The only proposed change to that is to, again, increase the postage budget slightly to $2,340. Financial Administration, which is actually the next section, is the IT budget. I don't, how many comments are concerned about that? Assessing, there were no proposed changes. The logistics, there were no proposed changes. The personnel budget, you'll see, there's a lot of changes. That's a result of two things. Changes that were recommended at the last budget hearing. Distribution of the remaining $14,000 and change that was still sitting in the 40199 account. So, when the Select Board made its decisions relative to tolls and merit increases, we had not yet made the adjustment for the personnel costs. In addition, the Finance Officer and I went over it again, based on current populations, based on all of the wage lines. So, these are our proposed new numbers for the personnel budget. I would request that the $22,000 or $24,000 be restored to the health insurance budget. As you know, that that's a cushion that we keep in there, because we budget this pretty tightly based on our current population. All we'd have to do is have one person go from having a buyout, getting a buyout, to a family plan, and we do have employees that could do that, and we'd be looking for $20,000.
Comments on the request?
I'm disinclined to acquiesce to her request.
John?
You're in agreement.
You're in agreement?
We will have a problem finding money if someone changes their health insurance.
I think we have a bigger problem with the bottom line than that.
Okay, I'm just, I just wanted...
Make the case. So, one against and one for.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm for it. I think we should go ahead and do it.
Planning and zoning budget, the last meeting, there were changes made to outside consulting and equipment line. Ms. Rossi would like to speak to the Board about this.
As you recall, I recommended that we don't renew with strike of regional planning for this year, and any needs that will need to be done by strike of regional planning would be paid for out of that line item. So, reducing it $300 could very well cause a problem, because we've gone from $5,300 a year to strike of regional planning, and I was hoping to have $900 for mapping or anything that the Planning Board needs, or, you know, any other department needs, to $600. $300 doesn't seem like a lot, but that could, it is a lot when it comes to maps and things like that. So, I would request that you put that $300 back in, because I already gave up $5,300, and to give up $300 more...
Well, just...
Outside consulting.
Clarification, the 53 is still here, so I would move us to remove the 5,300. I'm okay with giving Ms. Rossi this $300 back.
So, if you take out the 53, I can have the 300?
Yep. I'll do that deal every single time.
What a deal!
What a deal!
Every single time.
Well, we had taken it out before. Somehow it didn't get taken out. So, don't look like you had newfound wealth and lost it. You never added together.
Soon. Thank you. I appreciate getting my 300 back.
That is fine.
Government buildings. Again, I just would maybe be concerned going forward about this building, the increased costs to maintain and repair the things that are breaking. Any further comments on the government building budget?
No.
No?
Cemetery, as you recall, we increased the superintendent's salary to $1,500 based on what is what for cemetery trustees, who they need to go and spend. Again, you'll see another general government. That line is now zero. There was still $14,000 change in it at the last budget hearing. Those costs have now been distributed to personnel costs. Police Department budget, some changes were made. I made the police change, and some comments in the request for the Select Board.
And, well, in response to the request to decrease the training budget, I sent you all the memo, what we spent to date. We've currently overspent already on that line item. Still more training to go before the end of the fiscal year.
Is the training issue, the fact that we've been over because of the turnover, we're having to do training of new officers, is that what's eating the budget?
No, it's increased the training.
Increased training.
Scope of train, scope of training. We needed a firearms instructor, so it's training our current personnel. Part of the retention plan, training that they want, that's beneficial to the department. We've got Sergeant Liberty scheduled for a leadership class. Three senior patrolmen scheduled for, it's called "So You Want to Be a Supervisor." First step in training somebody to become a supervisor. They've all expressed interest in taking a supervisory role at some point.
So, you're looking for an increase in the training line?
No, just to not have it cut.
Just to not have it cut. The training line, what's there now?
65.
65 hundred.
Around 75.
So, we're going to leave it at 65? I'm okay with that.
Well, no, back to the 75.
One at 75. One at 75. Selecting Bugby?
I'll give up 300, but I don't know if I'm ready to give up 1,000 yet. So, can I postpone? I think we have bigger problems when we get to the bottom line than $1,000 here, $300 here, so...
Selecting, of course. Actually, I approve it, but let's see what... You approve it?
Yes, the request.
Yeah, I approve it, too. While we're there, though, I just want to ask a question that maybe is more for Julie. You know, we've got this 1201 Sergeant wages, then there's another sergeant down there, but there's nothing in the line, it's just a...
We used to have two sergeants.
So, that's just, you don't put them together in the same line?
No. Because you could have, you have Sergeant Liberty now, and if, let's say, I promoted the sergeant, they wouldn't be making what Sergeant Liberty was making, so...
So, it's just a deadline, right?
Yeah, it's just a spacekeeper.
Because there's funding in that in prior fiscal years, we can't just take it away, because then we wouldn't balance.
Okay.
I also just want to point out to the Board, just to make a note, that the part-time patrol officer wages are back in the budget.
No, it's just a shifting of the funds.
Go ahead.
Dispatch, there were no proposed changes.
No free, no changes.
Fire Department, there were changes proposed at the last budget hearing. I don't know whether the fire chief wants to speak to any of those. None? Code enforcement, they're going to cut to the overtime budget. I don't know if there's any deep concern over that. EOC, there was a proposed change to the supply line. Supply line. Highway Department, there were some proposed changes. I think Mr. Board would like to talk to the Board about those.
All right, so, I'm requesting on the police details that we put it back to three instead of 1,000 that it got put at. A police detail is $58 an hour, and on a road like Snell Road, which is due to get paved this year, which needs a lot of work done to it, and they need two officers on a road like that, $58 an hour isn't going to get me very far with only 1,000 bucks in the budget. To be able to work on those roads safely, same with a road like Packers Falls, where the speeds are higher and the traffic is greater. So, like that, put back to the 3,000 that it was, and then the road paving budget, like, put back to 210,000. We, it got cut years ago, and they've struggled to catch up to where it was, and now we finally caught up by spending extra money to get the roads paved. If we start cutting from the pavement, and we start having to go back and back and back, we're going to start losing the roads again, and it's going to cost more in the long run to do it. And if you go look at the schedule I have, in like three years or four years, the paving budget should go down to almost 143,000. It fluctuates year in and year out. Right now, we're at a high cycle, and three or four years, it's going to drop, and then it'll go back up and drop again, depending on the roads. Because we're paving 3.43 miles of road this year. The problem is, there's the roads that we're paving, are former state roads and highly traveled roads, so they're wider, so they take more tonnage. Where a road like York Lane and Whizwall, we can pave all those roads for a lot less, because we're not going as wide, so, that's why.
What if we, what if we did the detail and just took it up to 2,000 and see how we do?
I'm okay with that.
What do you think about that? Go ahead, please. No? No? John? No? Okay. So, we're going to stay at 1,000 for police details and see how it goes?
Yes.
And then the, what was the other one? About 200,000?
Paving.
Put a paving? No? No? No?
Transfer station budget, there was a very small deduction of $100 for part-time clerical wages, and a cut of $500 to office supplies. And then we also cut $10,000 for the hauling costs, based on the most updated information. I didn't hear from the transfer station manager if he had any concerns about those.
Those are calculations you worked out with him, so you should be, you're confident with those numbers at this time?
Based on the information I was given.
Okay, fair enough.
Southeast Watershed Alliance, no change animal control, there was a proposed change of $500. Think anybody has any issues with that? There were some proposed cuts to the requests for circle service agencies, in particular a large cut to the Cornerstone VNA, the homeless shelter of Stratford County, and Goodwood Community Health. Does the Board have any interest in putting any of that funding back?
I think we should have an interest, bringing some of it back. What was the, if I remember right, Cornerstone VNA serviced 65 citizens in Lee, I see?
Yes. 63 or 65.
The other one, and maybe, maybe I misremembered, but the next, the last one, the Great Bay Rotary Durham, I thought I could both cut that.
Yes, yep, you're correct.
So, let's remove that. The other two numbers are...
I'm sorry, what are we doing with that?
I propose, go ahead.
I should have indicated that the funds for the Great Bay Rotary were cut.
Okay. Yes, I agree.
That's the next and the last item in that section.
Yes, agreed.
So, we're leaving the funding as is?
I have no interest to change any of those.
I agree.
General Assistance Budget, we didn't make any proposed changes to it. Recreation Budget, there were cuts made, fairly substantial cuts made to the request. The recreation events was cut down to 5,000. The supplies was cut to 2,000, and the electricity was cut to 1,000. Is there any interest in restoring any of those cuts?
No. No.
The Library Budget, there's just a slight change to the ancillary PR expenses, again, as part of distributing those costs. And the agricultural commission was cut to zero from their request of $1,000. See Mr. Sotell requesting to speak to the Board about it? And then the principal bond interest, or as we're in the budget. Under the Capital Reserve Funds, the transfer to fire, CRF, was increased to $200,000. The request for recreation facilities was cut to zero, and then I added a new capital reserve fund to renovate Town Hall with a deposit of $100,000.
Can you speak to the reevaluation? I thought it would happen in '15 when it got changed to 20,000. I don't remember where that happened.
With this warrant?
No, I understand that, but where did that 20,000 come from?
Just in looking at what the bids came in at over the last two cycles, I think that we're going to end up spending, I think we've gotten lucky the last two cycles, and I think we're going to end up spending more money. So, I'm just trying to play catch-up on the money that's in the fund. So, any other comments, questions, concerns, proposed cuts?
No.
Can I, please? Do you have one? You have to the Town Administrator. I took all those numbers. They don't have the changes we just talked about, but last year, we subsidized the tax rate by about $523,000. So, yes, our operating budget is only up approximately 2 percent, but our net tax, net town incorporation is going to be up 19.39 percent, because we don't have a lot of that revenue. So, that's where my concern lies, because based on the information we got from the school district and also from the county, our tax rate is going to be going up 5.39 percent, or about $1.65. That includes, geez, that includes $100,000 for the proposed Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund, and also the amount for the interest for the first year's bond payment. So, and that adds about 41, 42 cents to the tax rate, so $1.23 is what it will go up if we leave everything as it was. So, I don't think I can, you know, support that kind of an increase, so I think we need to take a more look in terms of what else we can cut, but 5 percent, that's just too much for me.
Why, you have some thoughts?
My heart hasn't started running again after I did those numbers over the weekend, so I don't have any suggestions at the moment. That's something we'll look at in the next week, but I think maybe all of us can take a look. I don't know if the two of you have any ideas, or if you're happy with where we are, but I think we need to look at it again. That's just...
Okay. We'll take another crack. Take another, take another slice.
So, no further comments, discussions relative to the budget?
Yeah, just drink. No. If you want to talk about the warrant articles, but...
Okay. So, let's review the revised one, or revised from last time. There were changes made to Article 2, which is the zoning, proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Those came from the Planning Board. I believe that there's going to be another public hearing. I don't know whether there may be other changes that come from that. Ms. Rossi could maybe speak to that, but I've indicated the changes so far in red.
At this time, the only thing that can happen with the proposed warrant articles is a grammatic changes or withdrawal. They can't change the substance of any of these. You have to have another public hearing, and the time, the timeframe is up. So, they could either, you know, like I made a spelling mistake in A, so that will be changed, or other spelling errors that are possibly there, other than that, or it will be taken off the ballot. There will be no other changes.
Could we ask you to speak to 2A in terms of how the Planning Board came up with that? If you can.
Sure. So, it's the Planning Board's job to look into zoning changes, and as Mark Vellavo very nicely explained at the public hearing last week, by having commercial activity expand by variance isn't the proper way to do it. So, the Board looked into expanding the commercial zone, and they looked into the best option, which would be Route 4. So, they had a public hearing last week, and they made some, they tweaked it a little bit, and now the second public hearing is the 24th. And then if it, if they decide to withdraw the request, it will be taken off of this, and if not, it will just go through with a grammatical change, and that's it.
Okay. Because right now, can you refresh our memory, what we have now for a commercial zone?
Sure. It stops next to Dollar General. There's a house, and it partly splits through that house, and then goes across the street to the vacant tree lot towards the circle, and then the rest of the land towards Durham is residential.
But it goes...
Back 500 feet.
But in terms of, right now, it extends from the circle up north on 125 south.
Up north, up to the, yep.
And then west, can we just...
Oh, sure. So, right now, it currently goes on Route 4 west, it goes to the Barrington Line. Route 125 north, it goes to the Barrington Line. Route 125 south, it stops at the Stepping Stones Road intersection on both sides, and Route 4 to the east, it goes to the Little Brown House, and straight line across in depth of 500 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Warrant Article 3, we actually need to make a change to one of the potential withdrawal plan uses. The numbers need to balance. In other words, the gross budget, all of the numbers contained within the warrant article need to, so according to my math, if we change the planned withdrawal from the town building Capital Reserve Fund to 127,335, the numbers will all balance.
So, it's roughly $2,000 to ask for that?
Almost, 1,009 over 41.
Okay. That's roughly 2,000.
Roughly. The other thing is that I suggest that we use the figure of 90,300 as the raise and appropriate for interest in the first year's payment on the bond. We did receive an estimated bond schedule from the New Hampshire News and Bond Bank, and the number they're saying is the spreadsheet that Mr. Javon prepared.
Just to let the Board know, one of the things that I'll be asking for a little bit later on is permission to spend some money for getting some additional estimates in terms of that project. So, I suspect on the 22nd, or hopefully before, possibly, we're going to have updated numbers for this project in terms of costs.
Okay.
So, we're going to have to recalculate in terms of what that bond amount is, so...
Just a reminder to everyone, we are scheduled to finalize both the budget and the warrant on the 22nd. We have to wait until the 24th, after the Planning Board has its public hearing, before we know what Article 2 looks like. But it absolutely cannot be posted any later than the 28th, and we prefer not to scramble because...
Well, we're shooting for the 22nd, so, in which case, then, we're going to have to get updated bond schedules and stuff like that, so hopefully we can turn them around.
In time for the 22nd?
Well, we won't know until the 22nd of those numbers are.
Is the Board going to meet again?
Well, it meets on the 22nd, don't we?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. So, you expect to have revised bond numbers?
We expect to have revised project numbers at that particular time.
Okay.
At that time, the Board can determine what they want to do.
What, I'm going to guess you have till midnight on the 22nd to, I mean, just from a legal point of view, is that what we have?
On the 28th?
Or 28th?
I suppose, but since this has to be posted on the bulletin board outside of Massey School, I would hope that we're not doing it. Like, they get into it after they close.
I just want to know what the, what's the, what's the line?
We know somebody that could get you in. He's over there. All that front row right there could probably get you in.
I want to know what the line is, that's all. Hopefully, we won't have to worry about it.
That would not be good. Warrant Article 4 is the new proposed warrant article to establish a capital reserve fund under provisions of RSA 351, for the purpose of renovating Town Hall and to raise and appropriate the sum $100,000 to be placed in this fund. The Select Board should be the agent to expend this fund. Questions, comments? Article 5 is the operating budget, and we as yet don't have Article 4 of the operating budget. Article 6 is for the self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department, and I understand that we may still be changing that number. and I understand that we may still be changing that number of a hundred and thirty thousand. People are killing me. Article Seven, same thing, is for the purchase of a thermal imaging camera. And I believe Fire Chief is still waiting for a final number on that. Article Eight is to raise and appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to be deposited into the fire equipment Capital Reserve Fund. That is a change that was made at the last budget hearing. Article Nine is to deposit thirty-five thousand dollars into Town Building Capital Reserve Fund. That's another change that was proposed at the last hearing. Articles ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, and seventeen, all the same as they were in the last budget hearing. They are all deposited into the Capital Reserve Funds. And the contingency fund. Article Sixteen is, shall the town suspend the efforts to remove or demolish the parish house until July first, twenty twenty? Does the board have any interest in revisiting that?
May I speak to it?
Yes, you have to let her speak in the public hearing.
I'm sorry?
It's my, you have to let her speak, it's public hearing.
I said a yes.
Absolutely.
Patricia Jenkins, Harvey Smith Road. First, I'd like to speak as a, as a citizen, taxpayer. As, since that is a town building, I think that the townspeople should know what can be done with it and in order to get time for the Heritage Commission, which I'll also speak for. We are willing to work on that. But as a citizen, I think that we really should look into that as a town building as to what its best disposition is or best use is. So I would speak in favor of putting that warrant in.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, with the last budget hearing, the board took out the deposit of six thousand dollars in the Recreation Capital Reserve Fund. Does anyone desire to raise it back?
No.
And then Article Eighteen was submitted via petition. So the board, and it was submitted in a timely fashion with the appropriate number of signatures, registered voters, so therefore it needs to be placed on the warrant. It is relative to a resolution related to nuclear war, actually. And does the board have any desire to add any other warrant article?
No. No, this time.
This time.
It seems, it looks like we have a number of things that we're going to want to make changes to. I suggest that we... Continue, thank you. Continue the public hearing to the meeting that's on the twenty-second.
Yes. Okay. We can do that. We need a motion for that. Will we just continue it to the...
Can I? Can I?
I have to make a motion. You can make a motion. Okay. So it's to continue the public hearing to the twenty...
To continue tonight's public hearing to the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay. And make a motion to continue the public hearing to the twenty-second meeting. Sorry, not second. Select one, select two.
Yes.
Passes. Anything else? Okay. So at that point, I will close the public hearing, move back into the select board meeting. I'd introduce Mr. Jim Morse, Oyster River Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk with the select board once again. Tonight, I'm just really trying to bring you up to speed on where we are in our school budget. And we've had our public hearing last Tuesday, and so this is current as of last Tuesday. The board still has one meeting left where they could take action, which is Wednesday. So just to go through where we are in the school system, the school board set a budget goal. That budget goal was not to exceed three point seven five percent, hoping to land someplace between three point two five and three point seven five percent. The budget was to include any negotiated contracts. We did negotiate with our custodians and secretaries, and that will show up as a warrant article. We ended up at three point seven five percent, but we identified some additional revenue that actually brought the impact down to three point four nine percent. So every budget has a story, and I'm sure that yours does as well. Ours is the new middle school. We have been talking about the replacement of the Oyster River Middle School now for the better part of three years. Scott has been on a couple of committees for me, which I greatly appreciate the selectman asking him to do that extra work. We are at the point where recommendations have been made to, to the school board from a large committee that Scott sat on. That committee looked at thirteen different options related to the middle school. One obvious option was renovation. It is an eighty-two-year-old building that has been added on to four times at least. And it served as an elementary school, it served as a high school, it is currently the middle school. And it's done justice by the district, but it is beyond renovating based on reports from an earlier architect, based on comments from different groups that have come in. They feel like the building would be too hard to renovate at this point. The big question became, could we add on to the high school? Could we change the configuration of our elementary schools to be K through five again? Is there a way of going forward that would be better than just outright replacement? So that committee that Scott served on last year went through all of those options, and ultimately made a determination that the current middle school just simply needed to be replaced. It's done its duty. It's been a grand building for the district. It's served thousands of kids over the years, but it's time. So the committee sent off to the school board that they felt that the school needed to be replaced. The issue at that point was, do we replace it in its current location in downtown Durham? Or do we look at an alternative location outside of, wherever there's a Durham, or Lee, or Medbury? In the end, the school board made a determination that it was more cost-effective to keep the school downtown. Going to a new location would have added probably at least three million dollars to the cost of the school, and they just didn't think that made sense. On an educational side, keeping it in downtown Durham, we also get the benefit of being as close to the high school as we are. A good example of that was today. Our middle school kids walked to the high school for a middle school performance. So by having it so close, we get a lot of synergy between the two schools. We have math students at the middle school who walk to the high school to get their programming. We have music teachers at the middle school who go to the high school to teach. So the location really makes a lot of sense for the school system. So the school board determined to build new on the current site. And I know many of you have been at the new, at the middle school. So if you think about where the ball field is and where the school is, basically, the new school would be built on the ball field area. And when the school is done, assuming the vote is approved a year from now, then they tear down the old school and redo the field in that section with additional parking. So that was the major, really the major goal of this budget, was to get to a place where we could fund pre-construction. Basically, pre-construction gets us to the place where a year from now, in February's deliberative session in two thousand twenty, we would have strong numbers to share with the community. We would have concept drawings to share with the community and give the community an opportunity to ask questions of us and then ultimately vote in March. So this February deliberative session is really an introduction to this idea to the community. I hope many of you would attend that meeting, because it's really going to be one that really puts the middle school much more squarely in the discussion. And it's an important one, because this particular budget has eight hundred thousand dollars in it for pre-construction costs. And that will get us to a place where, if the community votes in favor of the new middle school, we would literally be able to break ground in May. So it would be a fast track to getting the school open. If that happens, then the new school would open in April of two thousand twenty-two. What that allows us to do is move the children from the current middle school into the new middle school, and then send the wrecking crew over to the old school and take it down. So that's why we're shooting for a mid-year transfer of students to the new school, because it just makes sense in order to attack the old building. The second major goal that the school system is working on, or the school board had for me, was to replace the current strategic plan. And we're in the process of that right now. The school board will be having workshops again starting Wednesday and all the way through March on the proposed draft strategic plan for the district. The current plan ends this June. Our hope is the new plan would pick up right at July first and move forward. Other goals involve recruitment. The district really feels strongly at this point that it's time to build some diversity into our staff. Everybody can't look like me, and the world doesn't look like me, or any of you. And we need to make sure that our students are seeing people of color in teacher roles, administrative roles, support staff roles, and so forth. And so that's an issue that we're working on as a school system. And then, over the years, the school board has accomplished really great things for the district, but they want to be kept abreast of how those things are going. For example, the late start time at the high school is a major initiative. The diversity plan is a major initiative. Mental health and wellness. So mental health and wellness really became as important an issue to the school system as math and science and literacy, largely because our young people are going through tremendous pressures today. And we really need to be at the forefront of helping them through those pressures. So mental health and wellness really has become an important multi-year goal and will continue to be a goal for the school board in years to come. I won't go down through this complete list, but if you do look through this list, you'll see that the school system has really been working very hard on a lot of initiatives that make a lot of sense on behalf of our students. I just want to briefly point out several of the highlights from this particular school year. The biggest one, I think, and one that all the people in this room should be most proud of, is the Masway School was recognized as a blue ribbon school by the federal government this year. And just for the audience to know, Masway was the only school in the entire state of New Hampshire, high school, middle school, charter school, private school, to reset, receive this honor. And what it represents, its academic performance at the Masway School, was basically exemplary in every subgroup. So real credit to our staff at Masway and an exceptional award for the state of New Hampshire, and quite frankly, Oyster River and the town of Lee. We continue to have incredible performance by our kids on our standardized tests. Our college placement rate continues to be some of the highest in the state. But one that I point out every year that's important to me is, so we're doing really well with our academically inclined kids, but how are we doing with the youngsters who struggle, who have handicaps, who have special needs? And, you know, this is a statistic that I am particularly proud of as superintendent. One hundred percent of our special needs population graduates from Oyster River High School compared to a sixty-seven percent national average. And twenty-four percent of those kids go to a four-year college, and another forty-seven percent enter a three-to-a-one-year college program. Twenty-nine percent enter employment. In this particular year, we had none enter the military, but that could be as high as four percent in a given year. You know, when we measure our success, we often measure our success as Oyster River. We often get stereotyped into the high-performing school system for our high-achieving students. But I also would like the world to know that we're a high-achieving school system for our neediest kids as well. So that particular one is an important one to me. In these upcoming school year, we continue to work on a multi-tiered system of support, meaning youngsters who are struggling, or youngsters who are advancing their education. We try to personalize that experience for them so that they can achieve at the highest level possible. I mentioned we're continuing to work on the mental health and wellness issue. At the elementary level, the word you would hear would be social-emotional learning. As we go to the middle school and high school, it becomes mental health and wellness. We're in a pilot stage right now for a program at both elementary schools. And then ultimately, one of the keys for Oyster River, I think, is that every child is important, they're not just numbers, and try to personalize the educational experience for them. And those are really some of the bigger highlights that I wanted to point out today. But again, I'm trying to be cognizant of your time, and I won't read through all of them. But again, when you have a few minutes, if you can go through those, you'd see that the system is doing extremely well. One of the more practical things that the select boards and councils normally want to know from me is how's our enrollment doing? When I came in as superintendent almost seven years ago now, our enrollment was projected to be less than two thousand. In fact, it was projected to be in the high teens. The enrollment currently is twenty-one hundred and eighty-six students. And if you look at the very next page, you'll find that the five-year projection from the Long Range Planning Committee, and the Long Range Planning Committee is a group of community members from the three towns who work really hard on customizing our projections. You can see from the five-year projections that we're looking at over twenty-one hundred students for each of the next five years. I think that's quite different from other parts of the state where they're actually seeing significant declines in enrollment. The other piece that I usually get asked by select boards and council are, you know, so we get all of that, but how is our town doing in student population? So I gave you a slide to give you a sense of how many students from Durham, how many students from Lee, and how many students from Medbury, and then how many tuition students we're currently receiving from Barrington. And that's what makes up those numbers. You know, as I drove over here, I came down one fifty-five. Actually, I came right past Todd's house. And one of the more impressive things that I think we have now in our Lee community is the new additions on to the Masway School. You know, the idea behind the pyramid was about education and was a reflection on sort of the lighthouse history, the mast history. The Masway School's name is derivative of seafaring heritage with the masts that were cut down. So when we added that very small addition, we wanted to capture that same history. And one of the things that I really think is cool about the new addition is, I don't know if you've noticed, but it's a, it's a flagpole that holds three flags, so it literally looks like a mast. And the addition came out great. So that addition, we had five hundred and sixty thousand state dollars to do. The whole point of the addition wasn't to put in that fancy flagpole. It was really to make the school's entrance more secure. So now, when you enter the Masway School, you enter a vestibule. You're buzzed into a vestibule, and then you're buzzed into the front office. And that's really because both elementary schools were incredibly vulnerable to people just walking in and causing disruptions. And the new entrance really... And the new entrance really looks great, but what you don't see from the road is the four classrooms that we added as well, and that speaks to the enrollment between the two elementary schools. We added a dedicated music classroom and three regular classrooms. That was funded by the taxpayers of the district. That part of the project was about $1,000,000. But those classrooms will allow Masway some elbow room to grow, and that's really what it needed. And so if you haven't, as select member, I know that the night I asked you to come over, you guys were incredibly busy as usual, but if you haven't had a chance to stop by, please stop by. In fact, I'd say that to the whole community, if you haven't had the chance, and I'm sure Principal Vase will make time for you and show you the new entrance and also show you the new classrooms. So that gets me to the Moheramit School. So we knew we couldn't afford to do both security entrances in the same budget year, so Moheramit in this budget, there's a proposal for a new entrance, not new classrooms now, but the same concept behind the secure entrance, the vestibule, pulling the principal's office and the secretary's offices to the front of the school so they can see traffic. And along the same lines that we did with Masway with the seafaring heritage, we're actually kind of capitalizing on our heritage with indigenous people. The Moheramit School was named after a chief, and so we had a meeting with local tribe and asked them, how could we enhance the presence of our indigenous people heritage? And so what we're going to be doing in those concrete areas is putting in Indians symbiology. So you will be able to see different symbols that reflect the heritage of the Indian culture long before we were here, our ancestors were here. So essentially, this is a concept design. The front entrance of Masway, we weren't quite as fortunate in getting as many state dollars as we did on Masway. You might recall, Masway was 560. We're only getting $100,000 on this project, but $100,000 from the state is better than $100,000 from each of us as community members, so we'll take it. The layout for the Masway front entrance will, as you can see, it's designed specifically so vehicles can't cross into student path. That's why that rain garden sits there. It's also a nice way of being able to collect runoff. Then the front entrance, and you can see how the front entrance is designed to act as a security measure for the school. So that's part of the budget. So ultimately, where we are is, as a school system, is we're at, as I said, a 3.75% increase, but with identified additional revenue comes out to be 3.49. The total budget is $45,981,838. We always have, as you do, major drivers. So our negotiated contract with our custodians and secretaries comes out to be $41,378. Our health insurance cost, we have a guaranteed maximum that we're provided. It was 5.7%. That comes out to be $313,500. The capital funds for the middle school project, $800,000. The capital account for the Moheramit project, $755,320. And then, going back to the mental health issue and the needs that we have for our children, our staffing at the high school was woefully inadequate compared to other school systems. We had a much higher student-teacher ratio than other school systems, so we needed to bring in a counselor. Part of that is because of the mental health work that we do, and part of it is just because there were too many kids per person. And then at the elementary level, we have had, you know, an influx of students, as you guys know, but a number of the students who come in have severe disabilities, and we need to have somebody at the elementary level supporting our two elementary principals who are experts in special ed. So we're proposing bringing in one assistant special ed director to serve both schools. So they'll be part-time in both schools. And then this is the last year, a three-year agreement with our teachers' union, the Guild, and that's $587,169. Just to give you a sense of where we've been in the last, I don't know, three, six, eight years here, the proposed budget, as I said, is at 3.75 with additional revenue at 3.49 impact. Last year, it was 3.2. The previous year, it was 4.7, but as I said to Sue Caswell, my business manager today, that really was lowered by additional revenue as well, and we should be identifying that. But you can see that even by putting in the $800,000 for pre-construction, we've been pretty good at keeping in the 3% plus range over the last eight years. So again, you know, the budget's at $45,981,838, a 3.75% increase with an impact of 3.49. This next page is really just for your consumption. Where's the money spent? It's really the schools and the departments. And then this one, which is the one that I was most dreading coming to see you guys on because I've not seen an increase like this in the seven budgets that I've presented. And, you know, it's really a product of this work, and so I'm going to give you guys the worksheet that Sue Caswell did so that you can see how we came to this number. So the news as you get this worksheet is really on the right-hand side, and it really shows how the school system comes to the impact. Now, I know that Scott, John, Carrie, you all know that the number I'm giving you now is wrong because it is a estimate and not a real number, and that number doesn't get established until next fall. And so when Sue and I do this work, we err on the side of caution, and so there is no estimated assessment, new assessment in this number, which you three will deal with and Julie will deal with in September, October of next year, and we'll deal with it in September or October of next year. I say that because this number is just so extraordinary that when we first calculated it, we were kind of shocked as well. But here you go. If you work from the worksheet, you can see that Durham had a small decrease in students and a 5.9% increase in equalized value. I'm just going to jump down to Medbury. Medbury had a pretty significant decrease in students, 4.31%, and about 6.1% increase in equalized value. So Durham and Medbury both saw pretty healthy increase. I mean, I know over the history of my working with towns, if you see a 3% increase in value, that's pretty significant. So for both of these, both of these towns have nearly 6%, I thought was pretty high until I saw yours. And so your equalized value increased 12%, 12% with a 2.24% increase in students. And really, even though our budget is up 3.49%, the impact on the town of Lee was pretty extraordinary at $1.91 per thousand. So needless to say, I had no sleep last night because I really didn't want to come here and share that news.
I don't feel sorry for it. We won't be in any conflict.
Yeah. And the only caveat is that in the next slide, I believe it's the next slide, Sue projected out what our projections have been over the last seven years and what the actual were. And you can see that in every case, because we're so conservative when we present our budget in February, March, that by the time it's all calculated in with the new assessed value, our numbers are always high. And so the real story behind this budget in terms of its impact on the three towns really isn't known until we hit September, October. And so I am ready to answer any questions you have.
Just to turn everybody, there is a defibrillator out in the hallway. Your heart has already stopped, just so you know.
I've used it once or twice.
Question about the proposal, middle school, and if it gets to be completed, then take care of more students than you taking care of now in the middle school, or is it about the same?
Our estimate right now, John, is that we're going to be building the school for about the same population. I mean, the middle school is hovering, you know, between 660 and 670, and so if we built a school for that, we're pretty confident. You know, the, right now, the unpredictable nature of the housing boom in this town is really, is playing out now in our budget. You know, you guys know better than me how many developments you've approved or been approved and how many are on the books, but I have to say that home construction in Lee has been nothing short of extraordinary in relation to the other two towns. And so that's really, that's really the story here.
And the second question, that we're still tuitioning students in the high school, that's going to be about the same number you said, it's going to cap out?
Well, it caps out by contract at 200 students, but Todd and I have always had a running bet, and that bet is I don't think it'll ever achieve 200 students. I'm predicting that probably next year is going to cap out at around, what are we predicting for next year, Todd?
178.
Yeah, 178, probably 185, someplace in there. One of the things that is attracting potential students' interest now is the new high school at Dover. And if you've had, anybody's had a chance to be in the new high school at Dover, but the inside of that school is stunning. And so if you're a 15, 16-year-old student and you're looking at our high school, which is really nice, but not stunning, and you walk into that, if you're buying based on the book cover, then you're going to think Dover's got a lot to offer. However, it's not just the child making the decision, it's also the parent, and so we expect that we'll still get our fair share of Barrington kids. Whether it'll reach 200 is really, you know, a big question mark.
Couple of questions on page seven. You've got the different towns. Who are the two or three in the other category? What is that?
Those are youngsters who are paying full tuition from other towns.
Oh, so that's an option for people if they want to...
It comes down to a request from one school system to another school system, and both school boards come into play, and ultimately, if both school boards feel it's better for that child. So some kids just need a fresh start, Scott, and in their current system, they may have gotten themselves into a pickle with their peers, they may be bullied by someone, they may be a great academic student but are struggling because of social issues. So every once in a while, as a superintendent, you'll get a call from another superintendent, and quite frankly, we call. In fact, we just called Portsmouth for a youngster who was struggling socially. So that option is there, but sometimes the school boards do it in kind, and sometimes they charge. These two students, we charge full freight for.
Next question comes on page 13. I appreciate Sue doing this calculation for us, but I'm just looking at 2017, you were right on in terms of Lee's number, and you were right on in 2014. The other ones are a little bit less. So even if our increase goes to 191 or 130 or 170, that's still a lot. One of the things that were offered to us, I don't remember how many years ago, I don't remember who it was, maybe Dr. Walsh or Todd, somebody, or maybe it was even Sue, there is a, I don't know what you want to call it, an unassigned fund balance or something that each of the towns have. Can we avail ourselves of that at this particular time to lessen that particular increase to the access?
So I think you're referring to the emergency fund, Scott, and it's about $350,000 into it, and that just got replaced this year because we brought it down to zero two years ago. So I think that's the discussion that we want to have collectively in the fall, and we know what the real impact is. Sue had a couple of other thoughts in relation to how it might turn out to be a little bit less than this. But I think that's part of, you know, the openness between the select board and the council and the school system to have conversations. We started those probably five years ago, and we have used it once. And so I think it's a question, a conversation we should have again in the fall.
Okay. Great.
Question.
John, anything? Yes, ma'am.
Another question.
Got to come to the podium, please.
Yara Petukova, 11-year-old. So I have a question. You mentioned housing boom in Lee, and just off my street, there are going to be 35 new houses, I assume there'll be new families, but the five-year projecting enrollment is going down based on your slide, so can you explain that?
Yeah. So the projected enrollment's going down a little bit, largely because Durham and Medbury aren't growing as much as Lee is growing. And then the other piece in terms of conservative projections, the Long Range Planning Committee calculates in live births, which are on a little bit of an upswing, and they also calculate in the number of kids who move in over the course of the 13 years, and they're projecting that our native students will go down a little bit during that time period. So when we're doing it, we're looking at it three towns instead of just one.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I was going to congratulate you on Masway School.
But you still can.
I still will, I still will. I think it's beautiful, and I want to especially congratulate the teachers at Masway School. But what I don't understand, I guess because I'm totally shocked, we don't have as many students as Durham does.
Miss, could I get you to talk into the microphone?
Okay, we don't have as many students as Durham does, but yet we're paying more, and our real estate value isn't more than Durham's, is it? So could you just explain that? Thank you.
So there's, in 1954, our ancestors decided the funding formula for the district was going to be based on 50% enrollment and 50% valuation. And so that formula survives to this day. So if you have an increase in students and an increase in valuation, and if you look at that sheet, Lee's valuation, the equalized value, is going up twice as fast as the other two towns, and that's why it has such a dramatic effect on the funding formula. And also, the percent of students going up is significantly more than the other two schools. So it's those two factors that play into the local funding formula. In any given year, for example, last year and the year before last year, two out of the last three years, Medbury, their impact was over a dollar because of these same factors. This is just the first time it's ever hit Lee this dramatically. So it changes from town to town based on the equalized value and the number of students each year.
Any questions?
I have a question for the superintendent. Last year, you talked about in terms of you were having some movement between students that go to Masway School and the Moheramit School. Can you speak to that? Is that kind of stabilized? Are you still having to move people?
Well, I mean, the big issue was probably five years ago, and we redirected the students who live along the 108 near Newmarket. We redirected all of those families to Masway. When I say all, it was a caveat that if you had a sibling in Moheramit, you got to stay there and so forth. But now, most of those students are at Masway. And then, we run into what we call the summer enrollment issue. And so in the past, we kind of restricted our choices to geography, and that all makes... And that all makes sense, except that you might recall, seven years ago, Moheramet School had over 400 students. And the Masway School, which has greater capacity, had less than 300. And that was largely due to sort of making a decision, if you live on this street, you have to go to this school. The school board, over the last six years, evolved into trying to stay true to its policy on class size, its policy to R. And basically, trying to keep the kindergartens at 18 to 1, the first and second grades at like 20 to 1, and then the other grades at 22 to 1. And when the policy guides it as opposed to geography, then you're starting to make different decisions. And so what happens is the principal at Moheramet, the principal at Masway, Todd and myself, we look at the incoming enrollment. And then if a particular grade is full in one school and it's not full in the other, we move them between schools. And so this particular summer, I think it was upwards of a dozen families that ended up someplace in that area, ended up being moved to Masway. So that's made it incredibly uncomfortable for parents because literally you could have a parent move in within walking distance of Masway or Moheramet, but they go to the opposite school. So we're going to try something a little bit different this summer in that we're going to wait until August to place summer movement. And then we can place based on who's closest to what school as opposed to just using the bus system to move kids back and forth. But about one-third of Masway now is children largely from Durham, a few from Madbury, which is way different than it was six years ago where it was almost exclusively Lee families. It really is an expedience in terms of what makes the most sense for the school system. And really, what makes the most sense for the school system is to keep class sizes rational and to not over-enroll schools. And so the two schools really are doing great as educational institutions. And so it's not one better than the other. It's really, how do we make sure that we keep our class sizes as reasonable as possible, Scott?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Brian Cisneros, 200 Wildy Falls Road, only a Lee resident, school board member. So we look at this budget, you know, obviously at $45 million, it's not something we take lightly. We... I'm a numbers guy. We go through with a fine tooth comb, just like you're going through yours tonight. But we look at... One thing I look at as a Lee resident is, you know, why... How do these... It took me a good year to wrap my head around this formula because the formula has derivatives and everything else. And I had to go back to my quantitative analysis days back in grad school. So but one thing I look at is why is Lee getting affected so much? Obviously, being the Lee representative, I look at that because I'm a taxpayer. So we're small enough that not only are we a great town, but we're small enough, when someone moves into town, at some point, we're going to meet them because we're a small town. Transfer station, town hall, wherever it happens to be. When I run into these people that move into town, I always ask them, "Why'd you choose Lee?" And most of the time, it's because of the school district, because they have kids. They're not moving in necessarily before the kids are born. They're moving in when they're older because they're in their prime learning years. So that usually means... That's why the middle school has more kids than usually the two elementary schools together. But I look at how is, you know... So what's happening now in Lee? Well, we're building a lot of houses, more than Madbury and Durham are. So what is Durham... What has Durham or Madbury done to offset that over the last few years? And obviously, as I look back, I know Durham since 2005 has been doing impact fees. Now, I don't know if that's the direction we want to go, but if these people that are moving into town are putting that... Taxing our, you know, I guess, putting that need onto our school district, then we have to find a way to offset that. And if that... The most common way done through a lot of towns is through impact fees. And impact fees are just passed on to the homeowners, but they're not passed on to the existing taxpayers. To the people that are actually cost... Because they're averaging about two kids a house, 1.75, two kids a house. So it's just kind of my thought I'm throwing out there. But I mean, with all these, I mean, 30-some-odd houses coming in or, I mean, always building something new, this is a good way to at least start that process now and at least take a little ease off the town budget. Because it's not going to the school, it's going to you. It's going to the town. And the town can offset... That tax rate to offset because they're going to keep putting more kids in the school. And we have a legal obligation to educate them. So that cost is not going to... It's going to have to be done by somebody. And if it gets on too much, then you've got to hire more staff. That's the biggest expense. And it just snowballs. So just my two cents out there. I personally would, as a town taxpayer, I'd love to see an impact fee in this town. I think we're way behind. And we should have started doing that years ago when people really started building a lot of houses. Right now, there's no fact there's any stop... Stopping and building it. Let's face it, Lee's a great place to live. Everybody wants to live here. That's why I moved here before I even had kids. So I lucked out. And my kids went through the entire system from preschool all the way up. And I'm glad I did it. I'm willing to pay the taxes to do it. I'm willing to represent the town for the school board. But just my two cents.
Thank you for your comments.
I also noticed, though, in Durham, they're building a lot of retirement homes. Instead of going with building family homes, there's retirement buildings going in.
Yeah. I think if Al Holland, our school board member, was here from Durham to talk to you about that, he would tell you that that's the most cost-effective type of housing that you can build. And going back to Brian's comment, last year, the town of Durham released about $100,000, about $100,000 of impact fee money, which lowered their contribution to the school system by about $100,000. So it was a dollar-for-dollar kind of impact. That probably was... That was collected right from the beginning, right? So that money was from 2005 on. And Sue and I said, just sitting there, let's petition to see if the town would release it. And they did. We thought it was going to be frosting on the cake. It turned out to be the cake. So it doesn't give us more to work with. It actually lowers their impact by the $100,000 because they released the $100,000 to the school system. So, you know, it's certainly working for Durham.
So maybe you and your team in the front can start telling everybody that Oyster River is a crappy school. And then we won't get any people moving in. And just the local people will know it's good.
At least it was a way of containing that kind of news. I'll tell you that the families that are super impressed with the school system, of course, are those who have special needs families.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. But I'd reiterate what Brian's hearing because when I hear people that are moving in, I talk to them, same reason. It's a school district. And I'm starting to see the reverse of that. I have neighbors that their kids went through Oyster River. And now the last one graduated in June. Guess what? They want to move out.
Yeah.
Because they don't want to pay for the extra costs. So that's what we're getting.
I think that's true in all three towns, Scott.
Well, unfortunately, it's happening in us. So I guess we'll put on the calendar in terms of exploring September-ish in terms of seeing what the actual increase is and see if we...
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on. Steve Pollak.
All right, so I'm here before you tonight to ask for permission to go to the end of Clay Lane in the town property that was accrued in the late '80s to retrieve road sand and material out of it. I know I've been here before, and I stated that we were running low on road sand that we got for free from Old Mill Road down where the swamps are. I have about two years of free sand left, and then I'm out. Then I'm going to have to start buying it. And going by the about 1,000 yards a year that they screened that they got, a yard of sand weighs more than a ton. So I did the math. I need about 1,400 tons of sand per year, give or take. We have some years where we don't use as much. The way winters have gone recently with all the ice and slush, we use a lot more material than if we just get snow because of the slipperiness. And the rain washes everything off. I did the math, and it would... I'd have to ask for an increase in two years to the budget for the sand for around $19,000 to $24,000, depending on what the price is and where we get it. And if we go with that route, that's not delivered, so I would still have to either go get it or pay somebody to deliver it. If I have to go get it, it's about 200 trips with our dump trucks to go get it. Round trip there and back. So that would obviously increase the diesel budget dramatically because that's a lot of hauling. If I hired somebody to do it, like a triaxle dump truck, it's like $75 an hour for a dump truck. And he's only going to get eight, nine trips a day. But he could cut it in half to 100 trips because he can haul twice as much as our six-wheelers can. Or we do what I'm asking, and we go in there, and we hire a logger to cut it off. And then I trade what our share would be of the wood money, and I have him stump it and haul the stumps away. And I start a sand pit. And I get my own sand and produce my own sand for minimal cost.
Now, how long of a period of time do you think it's going to last? How much sand is there? How many years' worth of sand is there?
That I have...
Estimate. I mean, I don't know.
Probably 15, 20.
Has it been... Has it been used at all for that?
No. The Cheney property where they're putting those 30 houses in uputs it. So... And then Randy has been in there. On December 9th, 1988, he dug test pits. 14 of them, I believe, all over the property and found what he has. So the areas where we can get sand, you know, go down 30 feet. So we dig a 30-foot hole, and I got five acres. And I can also... It's more than just sand. I get road gravel out of it, so I don't have to buy road gravel anymore. If I have someone come in and crush it, we can make our own gravel. So it's essentially... And Nottingham has their own pit because they use sand. A lot of towns have that need road sand, have their own pits. Are there...
I was going to say, are there other sand pits in Lee that we own besides this one?
Nope.
Well, we can't with the range of...
Are we making a pit? I mean, how big... Over time, how big does this pit get? It's next to a development. There's kids. There's... Do we have issues with the security of the pit that we have to address?
You have to fence it. There's MSHA rules that you have to follow. Put active pit signs out. You put... You don't have to put like fence-fence around it. You put the orange, like, snow fence around it.
Okay.
Active pit keep out. But if you go by the MSHA rules, you can't leave high walls. You have to... So like, everything that you take off that you deem not usable. Or if we generate road cuttings, ditching, and stuff like that, that goes in, and you make the high walls disappear and you slope them. Because high walls are inherently dangerous. You don't want to be working underneath them. I dig a 30-foot wall, and I put a loader in there. It can fall on the loader and crush the operator.
And the sand... The sand we're getting out of there is ready to go? We don't have to do it?
I have to screen it, just like I currently have to screen the material that we have.
Okay.
The material that was free, they screen every year.
Excuse me, can I butt in for a second? I just want to explain that this pit butts up to the open space of the Cheney development, not the houses. So there's a buffer, probably 30 acres of open space before this pit. And it butts up to the Clay Lane development, which is just two houses.
Can I leave a buffer?
Thank you.
I leave a tree buffer between the houses.
Okay.
The existing houses on Clay Lane, I try to go as far away from them as I could. I don't want to, you know, go right into the backyard. You know what I mean? I try to leave a buffer.
Do we need to purchase any additional equipment to get the sand out?
I could probably rent it, and I'd be fine.
I have a question for Stephen and a question for Karen. Steve, in terms of your access to this particular parcel, it'd be at Clay Lane, right?
Yes.
So what... Because you're going to, most likely, because we've heard this from Randy, they're going to complain about the number of trucks going... Because right now, nobody goes past their house.
Correct.
Have you had a conversation with them?
I have not gone out and talked to anyone yet. I wanted to talk to you first. Because if you guys say no, there's no point going out and scaring these people and wasting their time.
Yeah.
My saving grace would be it's only going to be town trucks going in and out of there, and we only work seven to three. So it'd be very minimal. There'd be, I mean, obviously, in the fall, if we had to get sand out of there to bring back, it would be busy then. But they could... We could have months where we don't go in there. And then in the wintertime, we may not go in at all.
So your plan would be to excavate the sand out of this parcel, bring it to the town garage, and that's where you take it from when you use it, right?
Yes. I mean, there'd still be hauling, but I don't have to haul 1,400 ton all at once. I'd have a spot. I could screen it down there. So I'm only bringing back the screen material type stuff.
And my question to Karen is zoning-wise, anything that we need to be worried about in terms of having an open pit in this particular neighborhood or anything we need to be concerned about? You can say no.
No, or, you know, well, we'd make sure we were insured for that, which I'm sure the town administrator would take care of.
Okay.
And then would you, you know, would be respectful and have, you know, certain hours of operation?
So whenever, in 20 years or whatever, do we have to then reclaim this? How does that work?
Yes, we would reclaim it, absolutely.
So is there... I assume there's a cost associated with that?
That's why you save the topsoil.
Okay.
Because essentially, at that point, if you exhaust everything...
Yeah.
But even if we exhaust everything, with regulations coming down that are not here yet, but maybe will be someday, is you're going to need a place to store road cuttings.
It's the stuff you did from the ditches and stuff like that?
Yeah. Because DES considers a lot of that hazardous material because of accidents, antifreeze and stuff running off the side of the road. And it has to be tested before you give it away. And 90% of it comes back hot, so you have to have a place to store it. And at that point, it's a place to store. And then the sun, you've turned it over, and the sun will actually evaporate a lot of the hazardous stuff out of it, so then you can use it again. But if we had to reclaim it, that's why you save the topsoil. Because once it's down and low, you just spread this topsoil back out, seed it, and you're good. And it becomes an open space field.
Or we could turn it into the Karen Rossy Memorial Swimming Pool because we can have five acres.
That sounds like a wonderful idea.
Karen would rather...
The Karen Rossy Swimming Pool, not the water.
Yeah, thanks. I'd still want to be alive in 20 years.
Okay.
I'd like an open field.
So you can ride horses and do horse jumping?
Yep.
We've also had a request for, what is it? Skateboard park.
No, I don't want a skateboard park.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. You've got the skateboard park. Don't put that in the minutes.
Bill, do you have any comments for this?
I don't believe so.
I don't think there's any special trees up there.
Okay.
No, I think it's good. We should move forward.
Okay.
And make use of this land.
Do you guys have any other suggestions? I'm open. I'm trying to do the...
Yep. I think this is a good one.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the highway supervisor...
Hold on.
Sorry.
So I just question about the tracks to which roads would they be driving on around that area? Because...
Like Newtown Plains and Snow Road or Newtown Plains to Pinkham Road.
So they just wanted to say that Pinkham Road already has a sand pit. And I'm just very... I live in this area, and I'm very concerned because we talked about extending commercial zone all the way to Old Mill Road. There is another sand pit on Pinkham Road. They are building 35 new houses off Pinkham Road. So I just feel like planning board is not really thinking about overall... So, I just feel like planning board is not really thinking about overall plan, like what is the development plan for next, you know, five to 10 years? You are adding to this area a lot of traffic and off Route 4, there already is so much traffic all the way to Old Mill Road. From Old Mill Road to the Lee Circle, the traffic is backed up in the morning. You are adding all these new houses, all these new trucks, so I just want to comment on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, I request the board to authorize highway supervisor to move forward with plans to excavate town-owned property identified as tax map lot L-5-00 with the purpose of obtaining sand for highway operations, including winter sand applications. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So, we are at number six. Ms. Julie, go over.
As you saw in the agenda packet, we received a revised meeting letter from Vino. I would like to use them on council, you know, to oppose more article, Town Center Project goes forward. I just didn't know whether the board had any questions on this.
It looks pretty straightforward, no, I have no questions on it.
Scott, is this the only place we looked at? Can we, do we look at other places or?
I actually didn't, this is just historically...
Always used to start, yeah.
No, it's just yours?
Yes. The whole thing responds to me.
It's his problem? Look at this multi-foot. I think I'm the only one that needs to sign. And we have miscellaneous.
Oh, study. Oh.
Just have it. No, I'm all set.
You're all set. Okay, I can make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Let's see, we do not need to do a non-public session, do we? Do we have a requirement anymore for a non-public session?
No.
Miscellaneous unfinished business?
No.
Yes. I have something miscellaneous and unfinished. Have you noticed that the left side of the room, all left, but the right side stayed?
Totally.
Interesting. I have a request from the Town Center Vision Committee to expend some funds. We got some pricing from La Valley Brett Singer and we'd like to have some other costing bids going out, not bids, but costing done. We've contacted two different people, one, Michael Castagna.
Say that again?
Michael Castagna. Sounds like it was Zanya, but it's not, really. And the other gentleman is Richard Burke. We've had conversations with Mr. Castagna via email. We had a meeting subcommittee with Mr. Burke today, did the tour. We're going to have one with Mr. Castagna probably on Thursday, or excuse me, tomorrow, probably. But we're requesting some funds to do that. We have extra money or money that we haven't expended yet, had 115,000 for the Town Center Project. And we'd like to use these two gentlemen to give us another, two data points in terms of costing. Initial considerations, nothing in writing, but their, that the costs that were being given are a little bit high. Something a lot high, but we'd like to use these two gentlemen and they can give us numbers by the 22nd. Mr. Castagna has given us a price of 48.75 for the work.
Mr. Burke?
48.75, $4,875. Mr. Burke has given us a number of $4,500. There's some incidental costs, travel, copying and stuff like that. So, I request the board, if they're interested, that we allow both of those gentlemen to do their work and to expend up to $5,000 to them to do analysis and give us some numbers in terms of what the cost of...
The response would be by when?
22nd. So, we'll have those numbers from the meeting on the 22nd.
20th?
22nd. 22nd.
There's really no way to get it before the meeting?
Oh, well, you'll have it before the meeting.
No, like...
The day of the meeting.
Day or...
Sunday, the 20th?
Well... That gives them a week, so.
We're using the funds, I think we need to get a better picture of that.
Well, we certainly need to get multiple lessons.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we approve that.
So, I move to expend up to $5,000 for Mr. Michael Castagna and up to $5,000 from Richard Burke for doing cost estimates for the Town Center Vision Project.
Excellent.
All in favor?
Yes, sorry.
You're there. Let me ask you a question, this is just a general question. I noticed when we were looking at the information on the construction of the school, it was the same architect and then there was a construction manager, a manager team listed there also. Did the, did the, did the school select that construction manager or did the architect select that?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay. I mean, I just wonder if they'd be using the same construction manager since they did it for the school system? Is that kind of their guy or?
I don't know, usually, the information we were given by AG, one of the people that we used in the facilities committee, AG, Mr. Goodano suggested that the construction manager is somebody that we hire, not the firm hires, because that person looks out for us. Because basically, that's what we were kind of missing in this whole project is, we should have had a CM to say, "Okay, well, the numbers you're getting from the firm, those are way too inflated," or whatever, to tell us, you know, because they'll know what's happened now in the construction world. So, if we're saying, "Hey, we want to spend $270," and they're saying, "Ooh, you should get it way cheaper than that," they would have that information. We don't have that particular skill set. The process that six of us are going through is, we're learning as we go, which is the best that we can do, so. Some of us are more talented than others, Mr. Captain, you're one of them, Mr. Jeans, me and the other, so.
Okay.
Did I miss anything?
Anybody else missing anything? Not Chase?
Uh, did we, did we want to reschedule the training for the 17th?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes, we should. This is losing membership.
So, it sounds like Thursdays are best. So, if you can let me know going forward what Thursdays would probably work best for the group, I will let the trainer know that we are not doing the 17th. Advertisements?
Julie? Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.